All right, good evening. Since 6:30 PM, the Board has been in closed session to consider the following: The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, and litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal. I will entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
A motion and a second are heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in open session. Good evening, and welcome to the August 5th Board meeting. Our mission is to educate students to be self-directed learners, collaborative workers, complex thinkers, quality producers, and community contributors. Please call the roll, Mrs. Patton.
Board members present this evening: Kristin Fitzgerald, Donna Wankey, Paul Leong, Joe Kozminski, Christine Gerke, Janet Yang-Ror, and Charles Kush.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Time for good news.
The best news: School starts in just over a week. August 15th will be our first day of school. Educators are going to start working their way back on next Monday, a week from today. So, the good news is that school starting is just around the corner.
Okay, we have reached the time for public comment. I do not have any slips of paper for public comment. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Board of Education? Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
A motion and a second are heard. Please call the roll, Mrs. Patton.
Kush?
Aye.
Leong? Yang-Ror? Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Wankey?
Yes.
Kozminski?
Aye.
Gerke?
The motion passes. We will move on to communications. Item 7.01, Superintendent Staff School Report.
Yeah, last week, we welcomed 100 new educators with a two-day induction to the district focused on teaching and learning, social-emotional learning, technology, and school safety. This learning kicked off our comprehensive system of support for all new educators. As new educators in our district, staff will be provided a mentor in ongoing professional learning to support best practice and help transition to District 203. This coming Friday is our new Teacher Breakfast where we will welcome Board members. You're invited to attend that, so please respond to the invitation you have for Ms. Stevenson if you haven't already. We have a great group of educators. We're looking forward to the beginning of a school year. So, that's it.
Okay. We'll move on to Board of Education reports. Item 7.02. All right, and we'll move to the President's report. I have a brief report from Lend. Our Lend Executive Council sent out a notice that due to the passage of the recent Property Tax Relief Task Force, they will be hosting a forum October 25th. So, mark your calendar because they want to ensure that they can give all of the Board members and others up-to-date information about the task force and where the General Assembly is headed with regard to the new Property Tax Relief Task Force. Okay, moving on to discussion without action, we are on item 8.01, Data Dashboard.
Great. As part of its ongoing self-evaluation process and goal-setting, the Board had determined that a district dashboard would be an excellent way to measure progress toward the accomplishments of goals and priorities. And so, this evening, we'd like to have a conversation with the Board and kind of listen to your thoughts and ideas about kind of the who, what, where, why, and how of your interest in this dashboard. So, Dr. Patrick Knowlton is going to present to you just kind of a walkthrough of the Illinois Interactive Report Card, which in many cases is a form of a dashboard which shows some information about our progress and about our school district. And then, also in the memorandum provided in Board Docs, which is available to the public, Dr. Knowlton has provided you with a number of districts just as samples, not necessarily looking to mimic or copy, but just as a starting point. And then, the questions, we'd kind of like to use, not necessarily as, you know, each Board member answer each question, but to frame the conversation about, you know, where to kind of start. We'll go through those questions at the bottom. So, to begin, we'll turn it over to Dr. Knowlton to kind of walk through the Illinois Interactive Report Card.
You can look up information about any district or school in the state of Illinois that's a public entity. So, this does not include private schools. The -- it's easy to use, and not joking, it has received awards nationally because of its layout. It has much more information than we're going to have time to get into, but I think the purpose of this was to really make you aware of what it is. Maybe some of you have spent some time looking at it. It can be one of those things that might be addictive to some people, so, you know, make sure you keep, you know, everything in moderation. The easiest way to do this, you can look at, like I said, districts or schools, and the search is really by community or district. I'm just going to go to -- I'll just type in 203. You could type in Naperville. You can see that there's other districts in the state that use the same number, and this takes you to the district snapshot. And there's lots of information here. I'm just going to stay high-level. If you have questions, we could dive into some of these areas. Have people looked at this before? So, you spent a little bit of time. You're familiar. It is evolving, like I said before. This starts out by just, you know, generally describing our overall district: how many schools, graduation rate, mobility, our exemplary summative designation status, second in the state, a little bit about adequacy, and then absenteeism, and so on. If you're interested in schools or comparing schools, the easiest way to drill down to a school is to go down to this section right here, and if you click on that, it'll take you to schools within the district. There's not just academic information. This vertical ribbon here, you can see academic progress, district environment, students, teachers, administrators, and so on. This is updated annually. It's not a dynamic website. It's not a website where, you know, you could go in in a week, or a month, or, you know, a couple weeks later and expect to see different information. It's typically loaded right before it's released to the public, the day after. It's actually midnight of Halloween. So, November 1st is really the first time it's refreshed, and it's refreshed with all the information from the year that we completed before. So, this Halloween, the day after this Halloween, you'll be able to see all of our data based on the 2018-19 school year. So, it's not -- like, if you went there now today, you wouldn't see the data that we've collected throughout this year. You have to wait a little bit. So, I'm just going to look a little bit at some of this. If you go to academic progress, for example, it just opens up a variety of possibilities here. These are -- some of these are accountability metrics. Some of these are just information the state has decided are reasonable to provide the public. And since I know we're quite focused and interested in achievement gap, if I go to achievement gap, you can begin by getting kind of a high-level, global view of our achievement gap performance. Actually, you know what? Let me -- I'll use this as an example. But you can toggle here between subjects. You can choose to focus on an individual grade level if you wanted to. You can take a look at some of the standard gaps that have been established over time: black, white, Hispanic, white, low-income, non-low-income, and so forth. And these tables that populate down below compare our gap to the state. So, across time, you can see 15, 16, 17, 18. The gap at the state level, low-income compared to non-low-income. And if you hover, it tells you the actual percent proficient, and then you can compare that to our local group, and you can see our low-income, non-low-income proficiency. This is just last year. You can do this for SAT as well. So, just an example of what you can look at. If you go to Park, which is now IAR, but because we're looking at last year's data, let's say you were interested in, you know, how a specific student demographic group did, and you were interested in, I don't know, let's just say mathematics, and you wanted to look at a certain year. You weren't necessarily interested in just the last year, but maybe you want to look at a few years back. You could do all grades. You could do a summary, or you can do multiple grades. And then, let's say you wanted to look at low-income, non-low-income comparison. Just add the demographics, and this opens up across the last -- across the last two years, because that's what I selected. How did our students in mathematics perform on the accountability measure that was formerly known as PARK? And these are horizontal stacked bar graphs that show proportion of kids that exceeded and met based on low-income status versus non-low-income status. So, it's important to know that when you look at this information, it's all students. It's all students that were assessed in that year. It's not students that were taken out for accountability purposes, kids that weren't continuously enrolled, kids that are first year in US. Some student groups are not in accountability. This is just the raw, pure data that we've cleaned, and you can explore that as you wish. The district environment, as district finances. You can take a look at evidence-based funding. This is relatively new. It's being populated as we go forward. Class-size data. What's really nice about this site is you can see not only the most recent year, but you can go back and take a look at by grade level and by years. So, you're interested in how this has looked over time. This is average class size for us, by grade level for last year. And if you hover, for example, right there, it'll just highlight our district data. Let's just say there's a lot of bars there. You don't want to be confused by what you're looking at. You just hover on the state. You can highlight that alone. Go back five years or 10 years, and it'll give you just a line graph that compares our average class size by grade across time as we reported to the state of Illinois. Just an example of some of the information. Students is a lot of demographics. We talk quite a bit about our enrollment. We talk about our race, ethnicity, proportion of kids that are low-income. If you're interested in how has that changed over time, you can really click on any of these tiles, and, for example, it opened up -- this is what we reported to the state last year, nearly 16%. If you want the five-year trend, you can see here how that's varied a little bit across time. So, there's not only most recent year data, but a little bit back in time, not to the beginning of NCLB, but in this case, back to 14. And other areas of, well, if you wanted to look at absenteeism, mobility, how that's changed, student attendance. We're fortunate we don't have any issues in that regard. If you go down to teachers, this opens up information about teacher demographics. We've talked about that with hiring and retention, proportion with master's degrees, ratio pupil-to-teacher. A lot of these are comparable to the state, so they give you some basis for comparison. Teacher evaluation results, teacher attendance is in here, the proportion of teachers, in this case, that had fewer than 10 absences in a year, things like that. Administrators, not as much information, the ratio relative to students, certified staff to student, turnover, and then salary data. And then, this, I mentioned it quickly, you can dive into many of these same areas, looking at any particular school you want. So, and again, you can look at longitudinal data. Let's just say we were interested in, I don't know, I'll pick Washington Junior High School. And so, you wanted to take a look at, well, who are the feeder schools, and how did they do? Go here, and take a look at their chronic absenteeism if there's issues. So, my point is, a lot of these variables and metrics can be examined or evaluated, not only at the district hall, but at the school level. You might have noticed up here, there's a little compare schools. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. But let's just say you had a good friend who talked a lot about how well their school was, and you wanted to verify that with some kind of facts. You could go in here and actually find that school, assuming it's public and it's in Illinois. You could do kind of a side-by-side demographic performance. Not as much drill down, but it certainly gives you a sense of, you know, how a district might compare, or a school might compare to a specific school in our district. So, the last thing I wanted to mention really had to do with this at-a-glance. This is kind of a quick PDF that the state's created. This is being changed with time, too, but you can open up a PDF. It's kind of a one-page. It actually ends up being two pages, and it's kind of an at-a-glance profile, in this case of Washington, for last year. You always have to look at what year we're talking about, but it gives you sort of a demographic profile. If you were visiting a school and you wanted kind of a snapshot of how that school had done in the most recent year, or any other year in the past, you could take a look at this and have it with you, so you'd have an informed sense of how things are going. And that's generated by year. I think this is like, last year was like the fourth. So, I just want to make you aware, and it sounds like a lot of you have already spent some time looking at this, but a resource with a lot of sort of the traditional metrics that we use for accountability, plus some extra work, too, that is part of what we do in Illinois. Anybody have any, it was like a eight-minute overview of, there's a lot here, and a lot of people sometimes spend too much time looking at this stuff, not enough daylight, but it's a great resource, you know? If you really want to get kind of a general sense of how things are going, it's a lot better than other states. If you look at other states, there's some states that do it really well. Colorado is a good example. Michigan is, too, but there's also states where you really have to dig to find this kind of stuff. You want to know how the ACT or SAT is going in Arizona. You'll drill down pretty far to find something as specific as school data. And a lot of times, districts and states provide this in Excel, so unless you enjoy, you know, filtering through just, I mean, thousands and thousands of rows by school, this really makes it easy. So, part of the transparency.
All right, thanks for the overview. So, I guess that's a good place to start the conversation. You see data that's out there. So, let's kind of just have a conversation about the Board's interest as a whole in terms of what you'd like to see us work to develop with you. And I think it begins with just that first: Who's our audience, right? And I think I know the answer to the question, because you could answer it as it's information for the Board, information for the community, it's information for the Board and the community. And that's my assumption. This is a dashboard you want public, you want it easily accessible, right? So, we can kind of move through that one pretty quick, right? So, looking to build something that informs the community, as well as informs the Board, right? So, and then, let's get into, I think, the deeper question, the why, right? What's the purpose of the dashboard? What do you hope to -- what questions do you hope to answer? What is it you hope to have displayed, or tracked, or monitored?
Donna.
So, I think we have been driven by our Focus 2020 blueprint that's up on the wall over there, and I know that that's going to continue to be worked upon for future years. But I would like to see some of the things that are not in the Illinois Report Card that are on our Focus 2020. And I kind of went through and, you know, I don't, you don't want this detailed tonight, but I kind of went through and bulleted some of the things that I think are not necessarily part of that, that are part of what we live and breathe at District 203, that I'd like to see.
Kind of like our goals and initiatives, right?
Look at some of the different models in the ones that we had, the examples. They're definitely driven differently, but some of them are driven in that way. Actually, this Wheaton-Worrenville has like goals, commitments, and then they actually have data for each goal commitment.
So, to piggyback off of that comment, first of all, thanks for providing a lot of the background, the other examples to look at. It was very helpful to see a range of things that are out there. Similarly to what both Donna and Kristin were talking about, something that really ties to the different tenets of our mission statement and our attempt or our understanding of how we look at measuring ourselves against achieving the five tenets of the mission statement in terms of educating students, self-directed learners, collaborative workers, complex thinkers, I can't stop now, complex thinkers, community contributors, oh, sorry. Complex thinkers, quality producers, and community contributors. So, the idea of what is our metric for each of those things, and how each of the, some of the major initiatives we have anyway that tie to achieving some of those things and heading in that direction. So, again, our take on how to do that. There probably isn't a standard measure for each of those things, but that's for us to determine so that we can provide that understanding to the community of, here's how we're trying to drive towards that, and here are the things we have in place, and here are the results we're achieving.
I would agree with what you've said, and I think we don't want to reinvent the wheel. I think the, you know, state has done a really good job with the Report Card in laying out all the data, both longitudinally and benchmarking to the state. And I think that's really important for us as a district. I think some sort of a front end where we can put some district highlights and, you know, summary pages relating to these district goals and things, you know, that could feed off of that data and, you know, other data that we collect within the district, I think would be really useful, right? We don't want to reproduce what's already been done quite well.
That being said, I think we do want to try to link where we could.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I don't think we have a link to the Report Card on the page currently, but we could utilize that as a way to display some of the data.
Right, that's what I meant by front-end. And we have the summary pages and things, but the links to the deeper dive.
Yeah. Paul.
I'd like to expand on the groups you've named as our audience. I agree with the Board. I agree with the community, but I'd like this information to go out to people in other communities, perhaps people who are interested in moving to Naperville and going to our District 203 schools. I think this could be a really good vehicle for listing and showing the kind of accomplishments we tend to accumulate, and I think that's a big part of what I'd like to put on this page. We regularly have good news for many athletic achievements, state championships, and so forth. I'd like to see that listed regularly. I'd also like to see some more of our academic achievements, whether that's standardized test scores, matriculation into top universities, and so forth. I think these are great advertisements for the kind of quality work that our teachers do, and that's promoted by our administrators, and that, how they partner with our parents and the community to accomplish all that. So, to me, that's another piece of the audience.
So, if I could just, I think I just heard you say something. I want to make sure it's clear. So, when you go to the district website, and you go to the "Our District" tab, you scroll down to "Statistics," that takes you to a page that does link to the Illinois Interactive Report Card. It is there, but you bring up a good point that I had to walk you through how to get there, that, you know, it's not as open and transparent, maybe. We are in the process of a website redesign that, you know, that'll be something Monday and fine.
And you may, actually, there's certain, like, the parts that are focused on that PDF are not maybe all the ones that we'd want to see. Maybe we'd want to have, if we were to break it down into our various goal areas, maybe in different of those goal areas, we would have a different link that brought up something specific that had to do with, you know, finances or something, because they have really great financial data on there as well.
Okay, so you've got a, I haven't heard from her.
No. We, Janet.
So, I think we spend a lot of time on the school improvement plan, that we could, you know, keep track of it all in one spot, just see it more easily. That'd be great, too.
So, like, a link to the school improvement plans?
Well, not only a link, maybe, but also just, you know, one page that shows everything at once, so that we don't have to click through every single, every single school, and maybe like summary statistics as well, you know, maybe like a batting average that shows to, you know, schools, the percentage of schools that are meeting or exceeding.
Well, I think that was the part of, on the exemplary schools, that was a really, like, on the district website, or on the school report card, it did have that part where it showed all the different exemplary schools. Is that what you mean, like, kind of their ratings?
Well, I'm thinking about, you know, when we see the, an improvement plan for a specific school, they usually have like one for reading, one for math, one for social and emotional, right? To, instead of having to go and click through and seeing the presentation, just having it, you know, this is what Naperville has, this is what Ellsworth has, all at once.
All on a line you could click?
One page, yep. And that summarizes, you know, the goal, you know, where we are, and if we're getting to what we want.
The one page that has each school. I just want to make sure that we do have it?
Got it.
Okay, great. Okay, good. Go.
The one thing that I get confused with, this is like when I was going through those other examples, I don't disagree with any of the ideas that have been presented, but I think we need to be careful not to get too education-y, because there's, you know, acronyms and abbreviations and all sorts of things that people might not understand. So, I think if you're not in the world of education, you, I think we need to make sure there's a little bit of narrative with some of the things. Just don't throw up 85% compared to 87%. We have to kind of give them a little background or a story to it, so that people who don't operate in this world will understand what they're looking at and be able to make sense of why it's meaningful.
Which leads into a great question. As Dr. Knowlton indicated, the Illinois Interactive Report Card is updated once annually, okay? That does require manpower, time, staff. What's the Board's expectation for the currency of the information? How often should it be updated? Are you looking at annual, semi-annual? What's the, maybe it ends up, depending on kind of, as we listen to you tonight, the type of information you want, maybe some of it is more frequent, others is...
Charles.
I have an opinion there, and I think it may need to evolve. I think we start annually and then see if there's an appetite, again, to your point, recognizing the tremendous amount of resources that may be necessary to update this on a frequent basis. I think, again, having kind of a, almost like an annualized report, there may be some things that naturally could be updated on a more frequent basis, just by the fact that we report on them more frequently. So, I think we should just kind of, kind of measure in moderation that way and say at least once a year, and then, if there's a need or an appetite to do it further, we could evaluate that, but I don't know that we need to start it any more frequently, in my opinion.
And anything that we had that was a link to the Illinois Report Card would update itself, even, wouldn't it? Even if we just kept the link, as long as they update the information, our link would be okay.
Well, it's as current as we keep it in terms of what we submit to the state, so we're mandated to do that, so.
Something else that just, that Wheaton-Worrenville had is if it was an area that was like, for example, that was maybe from their goals or commitments, that doesn't have like a data, like, point particularly, they would link to a board report. So, like, if you were, for example, say we were talking about community relations and communication, and we wanted to talk about a recent focus, we want to have a link for a recent Focus 203, they would have a link to a report, something like that. So, I think that's another area where if there is something like, I know some things are hard to measure, like, if we wanted to highlight our SEL, it's harder to think of a data point that could do that. But if we had a link to our most recent board presentation on SEL, or a presentation that had been given nationally, or something like that, then they would utilize other data points like that, so that they could give a broader picture when it's not just something that they could link to off the, off the Report Card or something.
That kind of helps lead into, I think, you know, just kind of turn it into a kind of a conversation, but one of the questions I ask you to think about is how'd you like to see the, how would you like to see it? How would you like to visualize it? And it sounds like we're kind of, it's kind of a mixture between if it can be graphically represented, do it that way, but at times, it may require further explanation, either a link to backup documents, or some form of a narrative, provide an explanation of it. So, kind of a mixed media, so to speak, in terms of what's there.
Yeah, I think Christine's point is really good as well with, about providing some narrative for a lot of the data also. So, you have the graphical representation, but then you also have a little description of what they're seeing and, you know, why this is important. And then, you have some way to maybe dive deeper into the data if you want to, but that should not be on the front end. That should be, you know, a click or two further down.
Yeah, so, just from an analogy perspective, if this were to be a newspaper, I'm thinking USA Today, not Wall Street Journal, you know? Something a little bit more...
My mindset is kind of, after listening to the conversation tonight, in the place of, about six years ago, we went back to a published bi-annual report to the community that we mail, and it sounds like really the, excuse me, the direction that the Board is heading is kind of an annual report to the community to start, that is more interactive, published online, takes you to backup and other information, not just necessarily the graph of the what percentage of this, what percentage of that, kind of something that tells the whole story, right? That gives us something to work with. Okay.
Janet.
So, how about, maybe to Paul's point a little about really comparing us to other districts, I think, what does the group think about that? Like, you know, explicitly putting out there, you know, the 203 versus the school districts that we regularly look at, like 204, 200?
I think we accomplished some of that through what's been discussed about when we do our annual data report in November, which we'll do in October this year. We have those comparisons there, and so maybe making links to those, certainly something that we could do.
Like where we have the benchmarks? Is that something that you're interested in?
I am. Does the group like that?
I think there's a variety of data points to compare to. In some cases, it makes sense to compare to other, you know, like the state, for example, and I think in some cases, benchmarks is a great idea.
Yeah, I think benchmarking to similar types of districts, you know, large community unit districts or something, it is really not a bad idea.
But like, for example, when you look at like us being the community unit school district with the most number of exemplary schools, or...
Other than CPS.
Other than CPS. I'd love to have the whole state, just so they know. It's not just our benchmarks, it's everyone.
Yeah. Okay.
So, just to, again, to tag on to, I think Paul's point about broadening the audience, I thought was an excellent one. In terms of really highlighting and showcasing the wonderful things that are happening here, so, things that we're pioneering on, so SEL's been mentioned. We are pioneers, you know, presenting on national stages and things like that. I think it's a great opportunity. I think it's a great opportunity to not only, to steal a term from you, but to use it a little differently, educationally, but we are, we are about education. So I think it's an opportunity to not overwhelm people with fancy terms, but to find a way to have a better way of explaining that to the narrative, but also helping people understand what are some of the critical things that are important? What are some of the things that we are pioneering as a district and how we are leading the charge in many ways? And then also talking about, you know, the contributions we're making to the broader community in terms of the type of new citizens that we're putting out into the world and things like that. And just, and, and what that means and what schools in general mean to communities. Because while I think we all in this room understand that very clearly, I think there's sometimes questions around that. And I think it's important for us to be able to speak to the broader, broader community and making sure that we're putting something in there kind of for everyone, what the schools are providing for the community as a whole.
Great. I think we have enough to get started. I'm not going to give you a timeline yet because this is going to have to be work in progress. We do have the website, kind of a redesign coming soon, so to speak. And I think based on the models that we have seen, you're going to love it. I think people will be very attracted to it. And so I think we'll get our, kind of self-settled in there, come up with some design, may come back for some additional questions at a future meeting. But we'll have something as quickly as, as we can that is a quality product. So thank you for your input.
Thanks for leading the discussion and it's exciting to see this come to fruition as this came from our board's self-evaluation the previous year. Okay, moving on to item 9.01, discussion with action, breakfast pilot and update.
Great. Last school year, administration came to the board with a recommendation to pilot a breakfast program at some of our schools. And so Chuck Freund and Melanie Brown are here to provide you an update and a recommendation for moving forward. And so they'll walk through what the breakfast pilot was, kind of what we learned from it, and then the recommendation moving forward. So I'll start with Mr. Freund. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. It's amazing to think we were here in January before the board to request support for our breakfast pilot. So seven months later, here we are already, it seems like, actually just a couple of weeks ago. But Melanie and I would like to provide an update to you on our, on our program. As a reminder, we ran that in four of our schools last, last spring, starting in February. Tonight, we'd like to revisit the details, just to remind you sort of how that pilot worked, share what we learned from that pilot, provide you an update on the financials, cost to the district for the pilot itself, and then recommend some future actions that we'd like for you to consider. So starting with just a quick summary, just to remind you some of those details. Starting last February and running through the end of the school year, we provided a breakfast option to all the students at Mill Street, Scott, Jefferson Junior High and Madison. We strategically chose those schools to get different demographics, sizes and certainly levels. The cost for breakfast was set off of what we do at the high schools, but geared down towards the other levels. It was $1.50 for a middle school student breakfast and $1.40 for the elementary student breakfast. Students who qualified for free reduced lunch also qualified for the same for breakfast. And the proof of concept was to gather participation data as well as perception from our students, staff and parents so that we could have accurate data resulting in a more competitive bid as we plan to go out for bid this coming fall for a new food services contract. Over the past 20 years, our district has seen a significant rise in the number of students who qualify for free reduced lunch. Our school leaders have shared some stories over the years of students who depend on the school lunch often, as well as the snacks we provide as the major and primary intake of calories on a regular basis. School leaders have requested that we consider a breakfast option so that we, as we know, that daily breakfast is strongly correlated to decreasing behavior issues in school and increasing overall academic success. So each morning, as students arrive at these four schools, they had an option of a hot or a cold breakfast option. The breakfast was organized in clear bags, a little bit hard to see in the pictures maybe, but that allowed students to quickly see the contents and then collect their breakfast quickly as they headed off to class. At the middle school level, breakfast carts were available for students as they entered off of the buses or as they, they got to school. But at the elementary level, we required students to start in their homerooms first and receive their breakfast and then consume that under the supervision of the classroom teacher. Next, several slides are providing you some perception data. We surveyed our students, our staff, our parents and guardians to better evaluate how the breakfast pilot went for us. We, our students surveyed, students that are in grades three through eight. Our K-2 teachers talked with the kids and provide us some, some, some review of that. But formally, we surveyed students in grades three through eight. So this slide on the screen here shows student perspective. And I just want to kind of point out that in asking them about serving breakfast, whether they loved it or kind of sorta loved it, we had a large majority of our students in grades three, three through eight believe we should continue to serve breakfast at school as an option. The survey also provided students an opportunity to give us comments that we should consider in helping us improve the breakfast service. Most of these comments focused on increasing the window of time breakfast is available. Some of them would love for it to extend all day long or most of the morning, of course. They also gave us comments about the variety and choices that were being offered. Airmark did a two-week cycle because this was a breakfast pilot. They typically do a five-week cycle on the menu for lunches. And again, that was really truncated just to, just to find patterns and get us some data on participation. But it was also helpful to, to hear about students who are looking for healthy options and, and maybe kind of on the other end, students who wish we served bacon, donuts and even more types of syrup with their breakfast options too. So we asked them, they told us. The parent results also helped us really get a sense of how effective this would be at the school level. So we'd like to share some, some of that feedback with you next. You'll notice that a significant, significant percentage of parents support having breakfast served at school. You'll see that certainly in the, in the bottom three rows on this chart. Clearly, a large majority of parents say yes, breakfast should be served. And then we also had a portion that you can kind of attach with that as undecided. What was interesting is, as we connected the, the data points, many of the undecided category respondents also commented that their student didn't participate. So they didn't wish to kind of weigh in sort of yes or no on that. As far as comments, we received many open-ended comments. And taking a look at those, one of the, the comments that really stood out to us is we're trying to learn why students may or may not have participated is that of the, the families that chose not to participate, so it's a subset of all of them, about 90% of those families responded that it's because their students eat breakfast at home. We know that in our community, many of our homes, students have access to breakfast halftime and, and have the ability to, to eat that breakfast at home, which is great. Certainly not requiring, requiring our students to have breakfast at school. When asked about ways we can improve, parent comments included things like having more and healthier options, just like our students commented. Some comments around the ability for parents to block access to breakfast. In some cases, they learned students were buying breakfast and they wouldn't find out about that till later in the day or, or maybe later in the week. Not eating breakfast during the instructional day, perception that breakfast is consuming some, some class time. Increasing the time breakfast is available. And one, one parent commented actually that her family likes it so much that they would prefer offering, us offering weekend home delivery. So for that family specifically, this was a real big hit. So it's important to note too, we certainly want healthy options for our students. Airmark does follow the National School Lunch Program guidelines, which has federal requirements regarding nutrition. Breakfast and lunch follow those requirements. And we know we'll need to provide further education to our, to our families and to our staff regarding the nutritional values in our, in our meals that we serve at school. And then thirdly, results from our staff. We want to share that perspective with you as well. This slide shows the staff is very supportive. Again, looking at the bottom of the chart, you'll see that an even larger majority of the staff weighed in very positively that they believe this is a very good thing for our students. They, they did note some impact in terms of instructional time and, and in the classroom. But almost unanimously, our staff feels that it's worth the little bit of, of work or attention that breakfast needs in the morning as we weigh out the instructional impact that way. And then just to kind of cement some of our, our staff perspective, we'd like to share a few quotes that we received in terms of comments. This one is from one of our teachers who commented, "I have noticed that my students, especially those on free reduced lunch, are more focused and ready to start their day. There's been less negative behavior because they are no longer hungry. Parents have also expressed that they like the program and it saves them time in the morning." Another one of our teachers commented that, "I was thrilled when I heard about the possibility for the breakfast program at first. As a classroom teacher with a great number of free and reduced lunch students in my classroom, I know for a fact that all of my students were not eating breakfast before coming to school. Now students are coming to my classroom earlier instead of just chatting in the halls to grab their breakfast and then continue their conversations. I had parents personally thank me for informing them of this great breakfast program the district was piloting and students telling me how excited that they are, they are that they can actually eat their snack for a snack. Please continue the breakfast program." And then an interesting comment we received from one of our health offices. "Before the breakfast program, we gave out breakfast daily from the health office. We supplied breakfast for as many as 135 students a month before this program was implemented. With the program, we went down to only about 15 to 20 students a month." So next, I'll turn this over to Melanie Brown, who is going to share some of the, our data with.
Thank you. Hi. During the course of this pilot, there were 66 service days in the period of 14 weeks. This chart here reflects the total number of breakfasts sold at each of the four schools. Overall, 71% of the meals served were to students who qualified for the free and reduced program. While the participation was greater at the elementary level, it's important to note that on average, just over 200 students received a breakfast at school across these four schools each day. Many of these students would have gone without a breakfast had we not provided this access. At our presentation in January, we presented a cost proposal for the pilot of approximately $36,000 using resources from our cafeteria fund, which is restricted to expenses for food-related services. The cost estimate was based on an assumption that 50% of the eligible free and reduced students would participate in the pilot. As seen as the last slide, we averaged 32 to 33% at the elementary level and 9 to 7, 17% at the junior high level. So this, of course, then would result in a lower overall cost. Based on the participation data, financial costs and the survey information gathered from our students, staff and parents, we are recommending a continuation of this breakfast pilot at Mill Street, Scott, Jefferson and Madison. The information we have gathered demonstrates we have students in our schools who need access to this important meal. If this program is continued as proposed for the 1920 school year, we project it would cost approximately $58,000. This is assuming the same participation rates that we saw this spring. In addition, we are exploring an earlier start to breakfast at the elementary schools, which would require added supervision. Again, the cafeteria fund from which these costs would be covered is a restricted fund that can only be used for meal-related expenses. There are sufficient funds to support this, this pilot into the year. We will be soliciting bids in the winter and spring of this year for our next food service contract that will start July 1st, 2020. We plan to request pricing for the school breakfast program as part of the bid for the first time in District 203. This will allow us, should we choose, to run a full breakfast program across all of our schools and be eligible for reimbursement from the same state and federal programs that help support the National School Lunch Program. And at this time, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Just real quick, I'd like to acknowledge Nicole Grosh from Airmark, who's here with us also. So she's our general manager on site and been a great partner with us in this program. Thanks for being here, Nicole.
Thank you, all of you, for that report. Questions from the board? Paul?
I noticed in your presentation that you talk about research as a reason why we're doing it. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate all of the anecdotal mentions for the success of the program. I'd really be more interested in some actual data regarding improved academic performance and/or reduced behavioral incidents. That would be a much greater justification for continuing, in my mind. If you could provide us that information, I really would be a bigger supporter of continuing the program and perhaps expanding it. Thank you.
Dr. Knowlton, you want to just touch briefly on what we can look at?
Sure. Great idea. What we can do at this point is take a look at how students that participated with consistency. We can take a look at their IAR performance, Illinois Assessment of Readiness, based on how it was completed, you know, as it was completed in April. And then with our new deployment of NWA MAP growth, which is starting in about two weeks, we'll be able to look at K through eight performance across time as we continue the pilot, assuming we continue the pilot into next year, and take a look at students and how well they perform as participants in that program.
Dana, oh, Dana.
Thank you for your report. The one thing that I'd like to see when we come back with, not for today, but when we come back with the projections for, you know, implementing it beyond the pilot, would be the estimate of the, of the amount that we'll get back from the free, from free and reduced lunch from federal funding based on students that we have using it. So like, right now, you're projecting the 58,000. For this year, that's entirely on us. I guess I'd want to understand if we have an estimate of how much, I'm assuming when you come back with a proposal for the continuing it beyond a pilot, that we would have some kind of percentage that we think would be covered by federal funding.
Oh, the reimbursement rate?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. We, they haven't published those yet, but as soon as we have them available, we can certainly figure that out.
Okay, thanks.
Charles?
So two things. One, Paul basically stole my question earlier or my comment earlier. So definitely echo the desire to see some additional non-utilization in cost metrics, so behavioral, et cetera. So I was glad to hear that we have some of that teed up or the things that we can look at. But then also, you mentioned in your report, one school talked about the reduced need to provide breakfast from the health center. And I assume that there was a cost to provide that. Was the, was the cost reduction in that included in your, in your metrics at all?
No, it was not.
Okay. So then there's, so there was some cost to fail of things that we're already spending money on?
Sure.
From, from having this.
And the meals that would have, that the health office mentioned, they did still serve some meals.
Right.
That would be as a result of students maybe coming a little bit later in the day.
Okay.
And needing that still.
Okay.
But that was coming from NEF, wasn't it? So it's coming from NEF? So it's going to be, so that would be NEF spending money on a different?
On a different program, which still has.
So that would still be, yep.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
And, and just to kind of bring that, you know, just sort of to reconnect that in terms of our recommendation, obviously, starting the breakfast pilot in February, you know, that's a short amount of time to align our participation and, and breakfast itself to academic increases and behavioral decreases and things like that. And that's why we'd like to continue the pilot, to study it further and, and to answer some of the questions that board members are asking.
I think all of us would love seeing the data, but I think that, that you've already shown quite a bit of positive results that you've been able to generate, which is great. I'm wanting to see, you know, your continued plans for expanding, you know. So we were able to get, you know, 9% at some schools and 17%. How do you hope to market it or kind of expand your, you know, participation? both to additional free and reduced lunch students as well as other students who may benefit?
Sure. We, we certainly understand and the data shows that a lot of our families choose to have breakfast at home, which is great. We did notice in our data that there are a couple of weeks in particular where our participation rates spiked. And we're going to look at, you know, exactly what the menu was and, and what the marketing was around those, those couple of weeks to see if we can learn further and apply that across multiple weeks and times.
And that's really the point of the pilot, right? See what works, see what doesn't, kind of try to tweak what we're doing to increase participation, get people excited. And so we hope to be able to continue that.
Well, especially increasing participation of the people who aren't eating breakfast at home. Obviously, if they're eating breakfast at home, no problem, but those who aren't. I like the thought about increasing the time at the elementary level. You've said that you would need to have additional supervision. Are you envisioning that you would let students into school a little bit earlier and have a lunch supervisor?
Yeah, we've talked to both the elementary principals about that idea. So we're, we still don't have concrete plans to do that yet. But we are looking at at least spending some of our pilot, if extended, to, to run it that way, see if that actually increases participation and what that does for us in terms of looking at expansion in the future. We'll have some schools, of course, with, you know, lots of students on buses and different demographics that that might be difficult access to make earlier in the morning, so to speak. But we have other schools that are high-walking populations, students that are already there at school for clubs or before-school daycare. So we want to take advantage of that and, and kind of study that within the pilot extension, if supported tonight.
Those sound like great ideas. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Okay, then if not, I will entertain a motion to continue the pilot.
I move to approve item number 9.01, the breakfast pilot and update as presented.
A motion is second, I heard. Please call the role, Mrs. Patton.
Liang?
Aye.
Housaminski? Wanke?
Yes.
Kush?
Aye.
Gerke?
Yes.
Yang Ror? Fitzgerald?
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. All right, we are on to item 10, old business. We do not have old business to discuss. Item 11, new business. We do not have new business to discuss. Item 12, upcoming events.
As noted earlier this evening, our new educator breakfast is on Friday, August 9th. Look forward to seeing several of you there. First day of classes is August 15th for students. Our certified staff educators will be back on Monday. And our next board meeting is on August 19th. Again, looking ahead, looking forward to the return of the Naperville Intergovernmental Dinner, which is on Wednesday, August 28th.
Any other events people would like to highlight? Yes, Christine?
The, the Glenbard Parent Series is hosting a free community event on Wednesday, August 28th, during the day from noon till 1:30 at Glenbard South High School. And it's entitled "A Community Conversation About Suicide, The Signs and Symptoms, How Parents and School Staff Can Work Together." And it's being conducted, the conversation's being conducted by Dr. Jonathan Singer. And the event, they're hoping to provide a better understanding of suicide by discussing myths and facts about suicide and prevention tips for, excuse me, for parents, schools, and communities. If the community's interested, or I know it's during the school day, so staff might be limited, but.
And do you plan to attend?
I do plan to attend, yeah. I've already signed up.
Sounds like a great event, one that sounds similar to our event, but one that would be a great option for people who weren't able to attend our event. Any other events? Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion is second, I heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.